Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 16th, 2024 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. We have a very special meeting scheduled tonight and a lot of stuff on our agenda, so we'll get right busy. One of the things I'd like to mention is the honorable cicadas that are invading our community. And I was on a golf course today and couldn't hear myself putt. Could you, Robert? Well, maybe we won't be bothered with them for long, but thank you for being here. If you would stand with us, please. I'm going to call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch. We have kind of a special Memorial Day program, and he'll introduce items B, C, and D.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Colleagues. In honor of fallen heroes, we've invited the JROTC Blackman High School Color Guard to present our nation's colors tonight. Cadet Gwen Hill, Dariem Zong, Hudson McNeil, Bailey Williams, Johnny Sabaton, along with Commander Paige Turner. After our prayer and salute to our flag, from Segal High School, we have Ms. Lily McLan, who will sing our national anthem.
I know that we all stand in awe to be in the midst of young people who one day may lay their life down for a grateful nation. Tonight, we will dedicate our prayer solely to Asher Sullivan. Jody Rather, wife of Commissioner Rather, has published some scriptures. The family has asked that we pray specifically for Asher's lungs, that he may breathe, and for his brain to heal. And so, our prayer tonight will be mainly scriptures, but as you bow your head and close your eyes, if you would, would you create an image in your mind of what you think God looks like? Focus on that image and plead for Asher's life. Let's go to our Father in prayer. "Then the Lord God formed man from the dust of the ground, and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life; and man became a living being. For as long as life is in me, and the breath of God is in my nostrils. The Spirit of God has made me, and the breath of the Almighty gives me life. In whose hands is the life of every living thing, and the breath of all mankind? But it is a spirit in man, and the breath of the Almighty gives him understanding. Thus says the Lord God, who created the heavens and stretched them out, who spread out the earth and its offspring, who gives breath to the people on it, and spirit to work, who walks with it. And when he has said this, he breathed on them and said to them, 'Receive the Holy Spirit.' And put breath in you, that you may come alive, and you know that I am the Lord. Then he said to me, prophesied to the breath, prophesies to the Son of Man, and saith to the breath, 'Thus said the Lord God, 'Come from the four winds, O breath, and breathe on these slain, that they come to life.'" Let everything that has breath praise the Lord. Thus says the Lord, 'To these bones, behold, I will cause breath to enter you, that you may come to life, and that you will be renewed in the spirit of your mind. For who has known the mind of the Lord, that he will instruct them, but we have the mind of Christ. Therefore prepare your minds for action; keep sober in spirit; fix your hope completely on the grace to be brought to you at the revelation of Jesus Christ.'" We are destroying speculations that every lofty thing raise up against the knowledge of God, and we are taking every thought captive to the obedience of Christ. Have this attitude in yourself, which was also in Christ Jesus. For who has known the mind of the Lord, that he will instruct him, but we have the mind of Christ. For the mindset on the flesh of death, but the mindset on the spirit is life and peace. Now we have received not the spirit of the world, but the spirit who is from God, that we may know these things freely given to us by God, which things we also speak, not in words taught by humans, wisdom, but those taught by the Spirit, combining spiritual thoughts with spiritual words. And the peace of God, which surpasses all comprehension, will guard your hearts and your mind in Christ Jesus. For the mindset on the flesh is death, but the mindset on the spirit is life and peace. The steadfast of your mind will keep in perfect peace, because he trusts in you." Lord, we pray that the swelling of Asher's brain subsides. We pray for more response from his pupils. We give you every single part of this child. You created him. You love him. We trust you with his life. Lord, breathe back life into Asher's lungs. Help him to breathe on his own. And it's through Jesus' name that we pray and we beg for these thanksgivings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag and the spirit of God. Thank you.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched, so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Commissioner Oliver?
Present.
Commissioner Piercey?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davidson?
Here.
Commissioner Beverly?
Present.
Commissioner Kuch?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Irving?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner McMurray?
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 19 present.
Thank you, Lisa. This time I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the reading of our minutes, please, prior meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes and find them to be in order. My motion is to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
And a second.
And a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, I guess we ought to be on the board for this. If you would, please cast your vote. All those in favor approving last month's meeting minutes, please say aye. Any opposition, motion carries. Thank you. It's time to get Goochy with it. Calling our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
You see what I have to live with. So if you work for the Rutherford County School System and you're a parent also that has a child there, you probably know Dr. Lindsay Halford. But if not, you may not know Ms. Halford, and she does awesome work for our children and their development. And so, I would like to introduce her, and she will share a brief conversation about what she does with our school system. Dr. Lindsay Halford has served as the Fine Arts Coordinator for Rutherford County Schools since 2016. She is an advocate for all music, theater, dance, and visual arts programs in our school district. Before her current appointment with Rutherford County Schools, Dr. Halford was the band director at Fairview Middle School in Williamson County and a music teacher at Laverne Middle School and Laverne Lake Elementary School in Rutherford County. Dr. Halford earned both her Bachelor of Music and Master of Arts degree in music education from Middle Tennessee State University and her Doctorate in Learning Organizations and Strategic Change from Lipscomb University. She resides in Murfreesboro with her husband Clint and daughter Iselin. He was in second grade at Thurman Francis Arts Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch, and Mr. Chairman, and all of you for having me tonight. I want to say a special thanks to the OIT people upstairs for helping me with my presentation. They were wonderful, so I appreciate all of you so much. And I tell everyone that I have the best job in the world because I get to advocate for the thing that I think is most important and most wonderful for our children. And when I saw Lily up here singing the national anthem, it reminded me why this is so important. Many studies have shown that many, many children in our nation don't know the words to our national anthem. And so, the Fine Arts is a place where we can cultivate that and make sure that our students understand that, know those words, and can carry on our tradition. So, I'm very proud tonight of her and of the Blackman JROTC, so thank you all for having us out. If y'all go on to the next slide, since this is a getting to know you, my name is Lindsay Halford, as he said, the Coordinator of Fine Arts. And when I tell people I'm a Coordinator of Fine Arts, the first thing they ask is, well, what is that? So quickly, my job encompasses a few different buckets. So, the first bucket is leading the development and implementation of curriculum. So that includes helping to select our textbooks, our curriculum materials, developing curriculum guides, and implementing those, making sure teachers have the tools that they need to teach these arts courses. So that's one bucket of my current position. Another is providing professional development and collaboration opportunities for our arts teachers. Most of the time, there's only one art teacher or one music teacher in a school. And so, making sure that they have professional development that is specific to their content to help them in what they teach, making sure they get to have time to collaborate with other teachers who teach what they teach, that's another big part of my job. And the last and probably the biggest bucket is just advocating for and promoting the arts in our schools. So you see there, there are several things that that includes, just sharing the wonderful achievements of our students with stakeholders, which is very easy because they achieve a lot and they do great work. Promoting their performances, planning district events. We have an all-county band event every year and all-county choir where we bring together students from all our schools. We have a district art show that's hosted at the Frist Museum in downtown Nashville. So coordinating those things and those opportunities is part of what I do. Needs assessments and then trying to set goals and meet those needs, looking out for grant opportunities to support our schools, and just in general, sharing the importance and impact of arts education with the community is part of what I do. So with that in mind, I'd like to share a little bit with you tonight about the arts and what we do in RCS. So next slide, please. The arts in RCS, we offer all five art forms in our school district. That includes music and all the forms of music, like band, choir, orchestra, guitar, piano. We provide those opportunities. Theater, visual art, dance at some of our schools now, and media arts, which is kind of the new kid on the block in the art scene. But a popular course we have is called Film and TV, where students are able to learn about the history of film and TV media arts. So we do offer all five. All of our elementary students in all of our elementary schools are enrolled in music and art instruction throughout their elementary years. And a lot of people are unaware that that's actually in state law. We, according to state law, need to provide music and art instruction for students in kindergarten through eighth grade. We are happily compliant with that here in Rutherford County. And overall, from K to 12, about 70% of Rutherford County students are enrolled in at least one arts course. So we have a very large reach. A big number of our students are impacted through our arts programs. And a couple of pictures you see here, these are our students. We have some Smyrna Primary students with their butterfly mosaics. Second graders learned about pollinators, and so they made their pollinator mosaics. We have some Blackman High School students that are about to perform Thriller there. And then a student at Riverdale High School composing music at a digital audio workstation. Next slide, please. Quickly, part of what the arts do for our students and three values that we really focus on in the arts in Rutherford County are excellence, creativity, and community. We feel that excellence in the arts, arts is one of the few places that kids are really, really encouraged to pursue absolute excellence. You know, in a lot of classes, a 90% is an A, and we applaud it and we go, great. But how many of us want to go to an orchestra concert that's performed at 90%? Not many of us. And so, the arts is one place where we really push students to go after and attain excellence, which requires a lot of discipline, and that's going to impact them in no matter what course of life they take. And it's going to be important to their employers and their families later in life that they learned how to pursue excellence. Creativity, we believe it's a skill that can be taught and learned. I kind of hate the term talent. We say, our kids are so talented, and they are, but they don't come to kindergarten as a full-blown Picasso. You know, we have to nurture that. We have to teach them, and we need really great teachers, like we have in Rutherford County, to teach them and nurture that creativity. We know that creativity is one of the number-one qualities that employers want in the workplace, and the arts is where we teach that. And community, imagine your Friday night football game without the marching band. Imagine walking into a school and there's nothing on the walls. The arts create community in our schools, and they create community for the kids. And here we have a picture, a great example of community. That is a choir comprised of campus school kids, McFadden School of Excellent Kids, and Browns Chapel Elementary Kids. They're at Oakland Middle School, where they collaborated also with the Oakland Middle School Choir and put on a community concert. And what a great opportunity for those kids. We provide those opportunities through the arts. Next slide, please. Here we have a picture of a kiddo at our Frist District-wide Art Show. They give them a little badge that says artist, and they get to go up and find their art in this world-class museum that they might never have been to if their art wasn't shown there. And so, we love that. And here's some examples of the excellence that I was telling you about here. We really do have some excellence here in Rutherford County. 127 students this year were accepted into mid-state choir. That's the most students in all of the mid-state counties to be accepted to choir, and we've had the most students from all counties for over a decade now. So we have very excellent choir programs here. And I think 35 of those were all-state students. 149 students made mid-state band and orchestra. Again, you see the excellence there. 66 students made mid-state theater, and 12 of our students received national recognition for their visual art next year in the Scholastic Awards. So that's part of our excellence that we promote here in the arts. Next slide, please. Last couple of things, I just want to tell you about a couple of awards that we have received here, the Rutherford County Arts. And this one is a true community award. The National Association for Music Merchants gives out a national award each year to recognize the best communities in music education. I think when I came to the Health and Ed Committee recently, we had been awarded five consecutive years. We have found out in the recent weeks, we have now been awarded six consecutive years for the NAMM Best Communities for Music Education. It's a true community award, because when we apply for this award, we have to show not only what we're doing in our schools, but we have to show that the community supports what we're doing. What opportunities are there in the community for students to showcase their artwork? How many people are attending concerts? We have to show that. And so, this is a true community award for all of us. And that picture there is a Stewart's Creek High School guitar class, a very popular class that we started at many of our high schools. Next slide. And lastly, we were also awarded another national award this year, the Music for All Advocacy and Action Award. They gave us the Community Involvement Award this year, and that was in honor of the community coming together to save the Jazz Fest event that was previously on the square. And when the community was told that that would no longer continue, there was a wide group of people who said, no, that can't happen, and we have to do this for our students. And so, it was Rutherford County Board members, elected officials, community members, parents, that all came together. And you can see from the picture here that that has been a successful event for two years at the Fountains at Gateway now. And so, we received this national award in honor of our community efforts. So thank you to everyone involved there. The last slide is just my contact information. I want to thank you again for having me this evening, for your support of the arts in our schools. And if any of you would ever want to reach out and have questions, I'm always happy to talk about the great work that our arts students and teachers do in Rutherford County. Thank you so much.
Next, without objection, I'd like to do a very special shout-out tonight. We have our local Correctional Work Center Administrator, William Cope. Mr. Cope, would you come up and bring your honored guest with you, please? Jonathan Beverley was going to read a memo, but Jonathan is not here. So, Mr. Cope, if you would, please explain why we're celebrating.
I guess I wasn't really prepared to speak, but I'll do it. After 30 years working in prisons and jails, I can tell you one thing, that corrections is a tough profession, and it requires strong leadership. Strong leaders like Captain Curtis Little at the Sheriff's Office and Lieutenant David Hutzel over there. Strong leaders like, you know, Captain Caesar at Juvenile or Captain Smitty at our place. Strong leaders who go above and beyond to make sure that they do everything that they can do to make sure that we lead our people in the right direction and to be there for those who are in our care. And those types of strong leaders are what we have here tonight in Sergeant O'Clary. Sergeant O'Clary's been named as the Training Coordinator of the Year by Tennessee Corrections Institute. He's really gone above and beyond over the years. He came to us from Hawaii several years ago. He's not exactly local, but he has made Rutherford County his home, and he's made Rutherford County Correctional Work Center his passion. And recently, he took it upon itself to become nationally certified through the American Jail Association. And I can tell you, as a proctor for that exam, that is a tough, tough exam. But we talk about corrections being a tough and a hard profession that not a lot of people stay in for very many years. And we get people like that who've made it his life, and he's been in it for 11 years now. You know, you can watch as many shows on Netflix or 60 Days In or any of those television shows, but it can't prepare you for when you let that door shut behind you and you're walking those top tiers at 2:00 a.m. in the morning, working with and for people that don't necessarily want to take direction from you. So like I said, it's a tough, tough job, and it requires strong leadership. And strong leaders, like I mentioned before, and strong leaders like Sergeant Thad O'Clary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mahalo.
For someone who wasn't prepared, you did really good. This memo will be entered into our minutes as a permanent record of this presentation. Thank you for being here. Item H, Public Comments. We've had two people sign up. Kathy Deverno is to talk about rezoning.
My comment here is limited to a request to Chairman Phillips that in the event that the rezoning application this evening is heard, I will speak on behalf of many of the neighbors in the Two Hills subdivision, and so I respectfully request a few more minutes than the allotted three for my turn to speak, please.
Granted, you have five.
Thank you, sir. Good night.
Jill Shannon, Need for Pediatric Hospital.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I really appreciate your time. In the wake of recent tragedy that has struck our community, I stand before you today to shed light on a pressing issue that demands our attention. Our children and families in Rutherford County are enduring an unnecessary hardship. When medical emergencies arrive, they are compelled to embark on difficult journeys, often spanning 45 to 90 minutes away from their homes. Consider this, during the morning rush, it takes an ambulance and agonizing 60 to 100 minutes to navigate from downtown Murfreesboro to Vanderbilt Children's Hospital. Even during off-peak hours, the transition time remains substantial, ranging from 45 to 50 minutes. And let's not forget our rural areas, where the situation is more dire. Flight time from Murfreesboro to Nashville stands at approximately 34 minutes under optimal condition. optimal conditions. However, such expedited travel is a rarity, leaving our youngest and most vulnerable residents without immediate access to specialized care when they desperately need it. At present, families in Rutherford County are forced to traverse long distances to neighboring cities in pursuit of pediatric health care services. This ordeal not only inflicts undue stress and financial strain upon these families, but also produces critical delays in medical interventions for our children. Every passing minute holds immense significance in safeguarding a child's health, and we cannot afford to squander a precious time en route to a distant hospital. The gap in our health care infrastructure is glaring and cannot be overlooked any longer. Our children need access to specialized medical care tailored to the unique needs as the one proposed in our very community by Vanderbilt Medical Center. Rutherford County stands as one of the fastest-growing counties in Tennessee, boasting a populace exceeding 350,000 individuals. With our county adding over 25 residents a day, it is imperative that we acknowledge the pressing demand for enhanced health care facilities. Among these residents are thousands of children who warrant superior medical attention within close proximity to their homes. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, it is anticipated that in the next one to two years, Rutherford County's populace will surpass the Hamilton County -- I'm sorry, will surpass that of Hamilton County. Moreover, in the next 15 to 20 years, our population is projected to eclipse that of Knox County. Both Hamilton and Knox Counties currently provide specialized care for pediatric patients through dedicated children's hospitals. The time has come for us to champion the cause of our children and that we have unfettered access to top-tiered health care within our own community. By establishing a children's hospital here in Rutherford County, we guarantee that our children receive the finest care imaginable in close proximity to their homes. Such a facility not only attracts special pediatric to our area, but it also helps us foster a broader future for generations to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
It's time for our public hearings. I'll jump down to item number L and introduce our planning administrator, Doug Demossi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Doug Demossi, County Planning Director. We have one public hearing for your consideration tonight. This is for property located at 1880 East Compton Road. This is for an application by Brandon and Danielle Mancuso. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is a planned unit development for a retreat slash wedding venue, and the size of the site is approximately nine and a half acres. The county zoning ordinance requires any applications for a retreat on less than 10 acres to come before this particular body, which is why you're seeing it here tonight. The applicants have been using Compton caves for photography sessions, but now would like to create a venue to add macro weddings and private events. Now, not knowing exactly what a macro wedding was, we went ahead and used Google to try to figure out what that meant. The definition that we got was a macro -- a micro wedding is anything small, intimate details, while a macro event involves the complete opposite. A macro wedding would entail a larger guest list, bigger spaces, and a fun experience from start to finish. Micro weddings are described as 50 guests or less. Macro weddings are pretty much anything greater than that. So, that was pretty much what we were able to find in relation to that. They are proposing to use the existing 2,400-square-foot facility on the property. I would like to reference your pattern book that's on your iPads, that's in the -- you'll see that in the public hearing folder, you'll see a folder within that that has various materials. The pattern book will be in there, as well as some other items, different emails and things that were received prior to the planning commission's meeting, as well as some more recent correspondence for some of the residents in that area. As you can see from the staff report, we've been dealing with this property since August 2022, when we first met with the applicants regarding this particular application. For the sake of our -- sake of time, I'm not going to run through this entire staff report as far as all the different activities that have happened and different conversations that we've had with the applicants. But I will like to call your attention to the letter from our building codes director, Tanya Bell, dated October 20, 2023. In your staff report under the Planning and Engineering Report, you'll find that on the PDF page 22. You'll see the descriptions of the activities that have been occurring at the property and staff's attempts to try to bring that property and the applicants into compliance. I do want to point out also that the barn on the property was permitted as a residential barn for residential purposes only. It is not permitted as any kind of an assembly-type occupancy. So, if this application were to be approved, it would have to be brought up to current building and fire codes, as well as a site plan being submitted to the Planning and Engineering Department addressing all county and zoning stormwater codes. I've also included the preliminary minutes from the Planning Commission's April 8, 2024 meeting to give commissioners an idea on the concerns that were raised during that meeting. The public hearing was well-attended, as you can tell from the minutes. Those who spoke in favor were primarily those who knew the applicants or perhaps had done business with them. Those who spoke against it were primarily living in the area surrounding the subject property. Following the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend denial of the application by a vote of 9, 4, 0 against, and 1 abstention. The reasons given, which you can find in the minutes, were related to the noise and lighting issues, traffic, and not being appropriate to the area. Now, since the April Planning Commission meeting, there has been some other developments on the property. One in particular, I just want to bring to your attention because it probably will come up tonight, but the property has been listed for sale. As of this afternoon, when I checked, it still appears to be active. Now, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that that doesn't really affect the standing of an application being brought forward or you considering the application. If the application were to be approved and the property sells, at that point, the new owners would just be bound by the approved pattern book at that time. So, again, that's really just more for informational purposes, just so you're aware of that. Other than that, like I said, the staff report here is pretty lengthy. I'll be more than happy to go into as much or as little detail as you want with this if you have any questions, but I am here for questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? For Mr. Harris?
Can you tell me the vote number again on the planning commission on this particular matter?
Yes, sir. It was 9, 4, the denial, 0 against, and 1 abstained.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Demossi. Thank you. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 24-012, rezoning request for Brandon and Danielle Mancuso. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward.
Thank you for letting me speak to you. My name is Judy Beard, and I live at 2306 Saddle Drive. I live across from the Mancuso -- 30 feet across from Mancuso's Saddle Drive gate. I appreciate all the work that you commissioners have done on this project, and I would sincerely ask you to deny this appeal that is before us. We've always had a kind and caring neighborhood. We have lived there 41 years. We have never had a falling out with any of our neighbors. This is why this is so unusual. It saddens me that we cannot have a cohesive relationship with one another. We all agree the Mancusos have a beautiful piece of property. It's just not an appropriate site for a venue, given the close proximity of all the homes. I see no benefits that an events venue would provide for our community. In fact, it would be a detriment to the peaceful setting that we all love. Since they have had numerous events over the past two years, we have seen how it affects our private way of life and has caused undue stress to all the neighbors. We have seen multiple cars coming and going in front of our house and car lights shining through our windows at 10 o'clock at night as they leave. This is only a taste of what it would likely become. We enjoy our country atmosphere and a quiet lifestyle. Once lost, it can never be regained. I thank you for all your time and all your work that you've put into this project.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
I live at 1576 Saddle Drive. I'm also an attorney at the law firm of Maynard &amp; Maynard, and I'm honored this evening to speak on behalf of many of my neighbors, all of whom respectfully request that this board deny the rezoning application. I'm here on behalf of my following neighbors. Peggy King, 52-year resident at 1616 Saddle Drive, along with Granny King's granddaughter and her husband, Danielle and Dustin Cunningham, also at 1616 Saddle. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors Allison and Stuart Boyce, seven-year residents at 3105 Field Road, which is on the corner of Saddle and Field. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors Ashley and Zachary McAlexander, eight-year residents at 1629 Saddle Drive. And you may hear their beautiful boy Alfie up there, one of the many children, part of the families that I'm representing here. I'm also honored to represent my neighbors Robert and Rhonda Ellis, 45-year residents at 3238 Meadow Lane, also in the Two Hills subdivision. There are many reasons under the zoning ordinances that I request that the commissioners here this evening deny the application, and I appreciate the time that you've given me tonight. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner P.
I'll make a motion for denial.
We have a motion to deny.
Commissioner P, if I could, just so we're understanding the record, is the basis of the motion predicated upon all the reasons that were recommended by the planning commission and discussed at that proceeding?
Yes. You know, we talked for almost an hour in the public hearing, and there were numerous things that were spoke -- each of the people spoke about, you know, noise being one of them, you know, interference with their enjoyment of their own homes. But the findings from the planning commission with a denial, 9 to 0 with 1 abstain, I think speaks volumes. You don't usually see, you know, that strong of a motion come out unless it's complete denial. But anyway, for those reasons, I would say I'm seeking a denial of this. Thank you.
Yes, we had a second.
May I? Thank you. Attorney Chris Shisun for the record as my second and as a member of the planning commission who originally voted against this as well. The additional reasons, as Commissioner P pointed out, was noise pollution, light pollution, traffic congestion were the main three items that drove this to a negative solution. So, just for clarity.
I think that the minutes also reflected an appropriateness of the -- for the area.
Yeah, it's an ideal place or an ideal idea if you could just pick it up and move it somewhere else out of the middle of that subdivision of that neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kusch. We have a motion and a second to deny rezoning request REZ 24-012 for Brandon and Danielle Mancuso. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion to deny carries. Thank you. I'd like to thank all the people from the neighborhood that were here tonight and saved this commission plenty of time by your presence and your combined efforts to speak as one. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here. Mr. Demossi. Item I, Elections and Confirmations. We'll call on our steering vice chair, Pettis Reed. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and Confirmations, item one, deals with the election of notaries. Commissioners, listing of the notaries may be found on your iPads. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
We have a motion and a second for the notaries. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item two, Steering, would like to announce three vacancies for the CCRC Board of Directors. This is a three-year term, starting July 2024, continuing until July 2027. Item three, will wish to confirm the appointment of Andrew Crimson as a juvenile commissioner. This is a four-year term, beginning 2024 until 2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to confirm Andre Crimson for judicial commissioner. I believe he's here. Stand up. In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I stand and I would like to pass on the vote.
So noted.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Item J, Resolution to Approve Our Consent Agenda. I'll call on our chairman, Pro Tim Traguch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, I have reviewed the consent agenda and find everything on it to be appropriate. Without objection, my motion is to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman, one item mentioned in there are the changes in the insurance. And being on the insurance, that the rates change, I want to clarify and say I'm declaring Rule 10. This is actually an increase in the cost to me, so it's not like I'm saving any money. But I want to be clear that, you know, I am voting on this issue and have an interest in it. Thank you.
You're good. Anyone else? Okay. For this, we're going to be on the board. If you would, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sharino.
I would like to clear Rule 10, too.
So noted. Thank you. Any others? Once again, for this, we'll be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Would that be a yes? Are you voting yes? Okay. Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please cast a vote. Record the vote.
19 yes.
Motion passes. We might want to get IT down here if we would and look at Commissioner Johnson's voting machine. Moving on, we have no unfinished business. We'll get into item M, Report of Our Standing Committees. Item M1, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Chairman, Robert P.
Well, the good news is that I have a short agenda tonight. Budget item A, a resolution from the Sheriff's Department, be it resolved by Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department, increase expenditures of confidential $30,000. A decrease in restricted fund balance of $30,000. Resolve this 16th day of May, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing no one, if you would, please cast your vote. None of them are working. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties. So, Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, please ignore that last. If you would, please cast your vote.
Yes. It's still not alive.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Motion passes. Mr. P.
The last item that I've got is, no action is required. This is presentation only. We actually looked at this last month. This is the actual report from the comptroller's office. Michael, if you want to explain it.
This is a report from our most recent bond issue that we talked about at last month's meeting. We're required, once this is filed with the comptroller's office and they send it back, we're required to present this to the full commission and put it in the record for the minutes. But this involves the refunding and the elementary school bond issue we did, closed on last month.
Okay, that concludes budget's business for the evening. However, I want to mention that our next scheduled meeting will be June the 6th. However, we are in the budget review process right now. So our next actual committee meeting is May the 20th. That'll be at 5:30. But all of you, of course, are welcome to 10. Thank you.
That special meeting is this coming Monday, the 20th.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Commissioner P. I'd like to just say that there have already been a couple of special meetings. And the budget process this year is quite impressive. Our finance director and our mayor have both worked exceptionally hard. And it's moving quickly and very efficiently. And I am impressed and would like to thank, not only the budget committee, but Michael Smith and Mayor Carr, both for all of the hard work that they put into that budget. Item M2, Public Safety. Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, just to mention that our next meeting will be the 22nd, which is a Wednesday evening, which is a little different from normal, but due to Memorial Day coming up, we have had to move it to the 22nd, which is next Wednesday evening. That's at 5:30 here in the building. Mr. Chairman, I'd like permission to come to the well to make a special presentation.
Permission granted.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may remember that this past week that we have had some storms again. It seems like every time we turn around, there is another tornado warning that's coming out. And I've got something I want to show to you that I think is quite impressive in what we've had. If you'll remember on that Wednesday evening last week, that all of a sudden we had tornado watches. I've got the Rock Vale area up there. The Igable area had tornado watches. If you were trying to watch the news, that early news that we get at 4:30 in the afternoon on our televisions, trying to catch up the earliest thing about the weather and whatever, all of a sudden, we were seeing what was going on over in Murray County. It seems like when Murray County gets a certain bit of weather, it comes our way. It tries to track this direction. Our public safety director at 4:30 put out a call. And this call went out to radio, it went out to social media. And we decided to try something different with this one right here because this tornado warning seemed to be something that seemed fairly dangerous for Rutherford County. With this one, I'd already received a call myself from WGNS about the possibility of posting our shelters at our public health and safety buildings. We hadn't done that before, to notify people that they would be available. We did that. We notified the people by these types of media that the Rock Vale, the Kittrel, and the Last Cassis buildings would be open to shelter in. That call went out by the public safety director at 4:30, and we started making those announcements. Please change the slide. And sure enough, the storms did hit Igable, Rock Vale, Christiana neighborhoods that blocked roads, downed trees, flooded streams. We had hail. We had over an inch of rain per minute. And I can verify that due to, I have a weather station, a small weather station, digital, that operates from the outside. I could sit there and watch the rain as it fell. There's also extreme lightning. The area did have an F-O tornado reported. We had damaged roofs, sheds blown away, barns heavily damaged, and many buildings had costly wind damage, including Lucky Lad out on Rocky Glade Road. Change the slide. What you're looking at right there is one of our shelter ends. That's Rock Vale Shelter at our public health and safety building at Rock Vale. Your Rock Vale, Kittrel, and Last Cassis Public Health and Safety Buildings became something of an arc for families in their communities. Rock Vale had 60 individuals to show up on their doorsteps once the alerts went out. Kittrel had 50, and Last Cassis had 46 to come to our community health and safety buildings, not only by themselves, but also had a few family pets being protected from the storms, along with some special items of toys that they needed for the children. They looked for the only place for them to shelter in as instructed by newscasters and fellow commissioners. Due to your efforts, we were able to provide for our county citizens with the tornado shelters built into their facilities that were protected up to an F-4 tornado. And the reason I am bringing this to you tonight is the fact that if you remember for several years, I was always coming to you talking about this, and the shelters was always a question. We actually have used these shelters now, and we have seen that the citizens out there are wanting these shelters. They were at the door wanting to come in. Because the rural area, when the television says you need to go someplace and shelter in, there's no place for them to shelter in unless they have built a shelter themselves. They are now coming to us. And as you noticed, I said in this right here, I called it the arc. Well, as I backed out of my garage that Wednesday night and took off in my community out there and started covering my district, I found out right quick, I couldn't get through some of those roads for water, power lines down, trees down, and whatever. And when I passed that station, and I'll ask that you change that slide again, I called that the arc. When I went by it, I had those 60 people in that building right there, and they were coming out. And I called it the arc because I saw that that building right there was just not a fire, an ambulance, health, or sheriff's office. But the main purpose is, it's the community. They are the community. They're community structures. They are built for their location and their communities. They are loved, adopted, appreciated, admired, and one of the family where our people live. You'll find our fire teams at events. Folks leave their food. They're often touring there. At Last Cassis, we put up a rock wall, something we had to do there. Some of you may not realize, but if you were at the open house there, there is the rock wall. Now, if you don't know what the rock wall is in Last Cassis, let me instruct to you that that was the first thing we were told when we got ready to build that building out there. You've got to protect the rock wall. The rock wall was a wall that was all the way around the old Last Cassis school. When you found that true person that you really wanted, as your husband or your wife, it was vital that you went and sat down on that rock wall together and got that kiss. And we were told that rock wall had to be saved for so many memories. And I can tell you, I am an example of that rock wall because I went to Last Cassis to find my true love, and I had to go out there and sit on that wall before she would marry me. I can just tell you that. Well, actually, that rock wall is back. It's better than it's ever been, I think you would say, Commissioner Piercy. It's much better. It's straight. And I tell you what, I think that that rock wall now in Last Cassis will have a whole lot to do with your population out there now. I think we've got it back, and there'll be more weddings to come out that direction. But I think it's important we see these things within this community, and these buildings are very important and vital to these communities. The shelters work. We had that many people to show up. And let me tell you this. I have seen on Facebook people asking individuals who actually come to that night to these different shelters. And they ask, how did you know about this? They said, well, one individual said, I was at the open house. Said, my son, every time he goes by there, he says, can we stop and see the fire engine? That one at Rock Vale has been adopted by the elementary school. They take regular trips over there to see it. I was at an archery club pancake breakfast at Rock Vale not long ago, early one morning. And when I get there, there sits the fire engine and the ambulance. And when I walk inside, the entire crew was there. The entire crew was in that elementary school with those young children. And I want to tell you, a gentleman come through with his pancakes, sat down on the seat, and fell off the seat. And sure enough, we had an ambulance crew sitting there, ready to pick him up and check him out. They are now a part of the community. Those buildings are important to those communities right now. And when we opened Walter Hill, probably next month, we'll go to Plainview and have that one going here before long. They're quite important. The Rock Vale Station, some of you may ask, are they really being used? Since we opened that one in August in Rock Vale, they've had 878 fire runs, 1,113 ambulance runs. They're running all the time. They are continually on the road and being used by the people. We just received a letter that has been asked that we read it to the full commission, and I'll read it to you. "On April the 24th, I started feeling very bad. Since I work at the Cranor Road Convenience Center, I drove to the Public Health Service Building on Woodbury Pike, the old Kittrel Fire Department site, to get checked out. I had no idea just how bad things were and how run they could have gone. The firefighters made me sit down. They started pulling out equipment along with EMS. My blood pressure was very high, as well as my heart rate. What was really concerning was my heartbeat was highly irregular. They called ahead to let the hospital staff know what to expect when I was rushed to Ascension St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital and admitted to the ER. The staff started procedures to correct my heartbeat. It was so bad that they had to put me to sleep to shock my heart to a normal state. I cannot tell you how blessed I and my family feel to have this service available to our community. I owe you all my life. I know when the county started planning these sites, there was both positive and negative feedback. I was positive, but I am now even more so. I'd like to thank Mayor Carr and our county commissioners for making such a wonderful program available to all of us. I am alive because of it. I also wish to thank the staff of that day on Engine 54 and Medic 54. There are firefighter Sam Christopher, Cameron Jacobs, Cohen Bennett, Trey Rose, and Samuel Gordon. Medic 54, Scott Overholz, and Kiki Matthews. God bless you all. James P. B. Paul, Jr." We get these almost every day, from somebody thanking us for what's happened. I'll never forget a gentleman, when we were first talking about that out there where I'm at, he was very skeptical of what we were doing. You know, one of the first runs we made was to his house. And I can't forget seeing him, not a month or two after we made that run, he was on a walker, and he'd come up thanking me for the fact that that was there. Because he said, they saved my life. He said, those few extra golden minutes made that difference. And I think that's what's important here. That Wednesday night, when I come out, the first thing I saw were those red lights of that fire engine making the calls within the communities. They were on the scene. I don't know how many of you remember in Kentucky a couple of years ago, when they had a major tornado. And you remember Mayfield, Kentucky, when it was flattened. Their first responders couldn't get out. The idea of our tornado shelter is to protect us from that. It's important that these first responders get out. And in your county out here, that's what they're there for. I wanted you to know about this. I wanted you to see what was happening in these shelters. I know we had 60 and 50 and 46 in these. The next tornado that comes out, it's going to be different. We're going to have even more by word of mouth. We're looking at ways to improve this. I know we've had cats and dogs and everything showing up. We're trying to work in what we've got to do there. We're starting to come up with ideas for captains of these shelters, where individuals will be there to be with the people. Because when these shelters come to that point, and when that tornado is fairly close, the door on these shelters do shut and lock, where it can't be blown open and whatever. So we work with that. I just wanted you to be aware of that. And commissioners, what I'm here tonight is thank you. Thank you for your continuous support of this. And you need to be proud of something you're doing right there within your county because the people do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Item M3, Health and Education Committee Chairman, Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. No report, but our next meeting is Tuesday, May the 28th, 5:30 PM in this chamber. And I stood up just to announce it is a joint meeting with Budget and the School Board. So if you want to, the budget for the school board will be presented to Health and Ed that night. It will likewise be heard by Budget so that they don't have to repeat themselves. Following our meeting, I believe Chairman P, the budget will call themselves to order and consider that budget as well.
Thank you. Item M4, Property Management Committee Chairman, Alan McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got one item on the agenda tonight. Resolution to rename the Kittrel Public Health and Safety Building. And at this moment, I would like the representatives from the Kittrel community to come up. And as they are coming up, they are wanting to read the biography of each individual that the Public Safety Building will be named afterwards.
By the way, I was told I had to come up also, but...
You're from Kittrel?
That's right. I'm proud of it.
Ham and biscuits. Which one would like to go first?
All right, this is Robert P. Senior. Was born May 4th, 1929, is the youngest of four children. He was affectionately known as Bobby by his beloved family. Some of his childhood adventures are chronicled in the book Remembering Rutherford by local historian Greg Tucker. Upon graduation from high school, he enlisted with United States Army, where he became a veteran of the Korean conflict. He worked as a civil engineer at the Stewart Air Force Base in Smyrna before its closure, and then transferred to Redstone Arse. and then transferred to Redstone Arsenal. Bob retired after 26 years in the Navy Seabees Reserve. He was an employee of Samsonite locally, and later worked as a Rutherford County Convenience Center operator, where he refurbished items for others' use. In addition to raising his four children with his wife Louise of 50 years, Mr. P. was very active in his community. He was a member of the Antioch Church of Christ, as well as a longtime softball coach for Kitterell Ballfields. He was Rutherford County Commissioner, representing the rural areas of Halls Hill, Milton, Reedaville, and Kitterell, serving on such committees as Public Works and Steering. Bob was a founding member of the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department, and served on their board, helping to finally bring better fire protection to the area. Bob was always an advocate for the underdog and the underrepresented. He was known for never being afraid to share his voice. Robert P. Senior lived a humble life in his 78 years, but what he had, he gave back to his church, his country, his family, and his community. And I am Rachel P. Cornet, and I just read the bio of my grandfather.
Unfortunately, Mr. Elrod's kin were not able to attend tonight, so I've got the honor again of reading Clyde's biography. And by the way, when I went to property management, a lot of the people didn't know the gentleman that we were suggesting naming the building after, and that's why you're getting the biography here. Clyde Montgomery Elrod. Clyde Montgomery Elrod was born on May 2nd, 1919, and was the son of the late Clyde Montgomery Elrod Senior and Margaret Jane Davis Elrod. After graduating from high school at Kitterell in 1939, Clyde married the love of his life, fellow Kitterell graduate Catherine Jacobs Elrod. Together, they raised their two daughters, Sarah Elrod Roberts and Margaret Jane Elrod. The Elrods were lifelong members of Science Hill Church of Christ. They both loved and adored their grandchildren, Cindy Brenly, Angie Murray, and Bo Davis. Clyde and Catherine were married for over 60 years, until Catherine's death in 2005. Clyde passed the following year, in 2006. Clyde made his living as a truck driver for over 39 years, but he was also a driving force in the Rutherford County government for many years. He served as a Rutherford County Commissioner for over 30 years, from 1968 to 1998. As a member of the Rutherford County Court, which later became the County Commission, Clyde helped start the Rutherford County Planning Commission in the late 1960s. During his tenure with the court, Clyde was instrumental in the county developing a finance office. He served on and became chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee and the Steering Committee. As a planning commissioner, Clyde was true to form, just like he was in life. He always tried to make everyone happy with the decisions that he made. Clyde was also one of the founders and vice president of the Double Springs Water District, later known as CUD, Consolidated Utility District. He was also one of the original founders of the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department. Clyde was a member of the Insurance Committee, Legislative Committee, the Zoning and Planning Committee, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, the Stones River Manor Board, and the Greater National Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. At the time of his death, he was serving on the St. Clair Senior Citizens Center Board and the Community Care Rutherford County Board of Directors. Clyde loved the Lord, his family, his friends, and the community. He dedicated his life to the service of others, but never passed up the opportunity to tell a good joke or make people laugh. He was truly one in a million. That is what his family submitted. I'd like to add to that. Clyde's somebody that I truly love myself. He was the commissioner in my district for a long time, and after I became commissioner, I went to Clyde, and he advised me. It was like Google. You know, if you had a question, "What happened?", he was there. I don't know if you caught what was said here, but he started our finance department. He started CUD. Most of you were drinking water because of him. Fire protection, and it goes on and on. The reason I wanted to expound on this a little bit, and naming these people and the four individuals I've named, I've had some people question that, and there was three criteria mainly. One was, they had to be a member of the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department Board, and all these guys were for a long time. Two, they had to be a public servant. And when I say that, all four of these gentlemen, and none of the other board members that I'm aware of, ever served on the county boards. And by saying that, they actually applied for the board and were appointed to the individual boards they served on by the current county commission at that time. So these are true public servants. And lastly, deceased. You know, we've got many wonderful people out in the Kitterell area. You know, people have asked me, "Well, why didn't you suggest Bud Mitchell?" Well, Bud's still above ground, and I'm glad of it. We need good people like him. George Curry, there's another one. You know, Freddie Hobbs, who is deceased, put a lot of time and effort into this fire department there. However, he did not do the public service that these other guys have done. But I wanted you guys to know what the criteria was for the name. And two, the name is for all four of these guys. There is an acronym out there, as he'll show you, and the committee already knows, but this is named after all four of these individuals, because that fire department would not have occurred without all of them. Thank you.
Chairman Phillips, Commissioners, I'm Charlotte Yuri-Pee, and I appreciate your consideration of this. I agree, all these gentlemen are important members of our community, and I'm proud to read the biography of my father, who is a lifelong resident of Reedaville. William Laughlin Yuri grew up on his family land grant farm awarded to our family in the late 1700s, that I can proudly say we still live on and still farm. Laughlin graduated from Kitterell High School in 1955, earned his BS degree from MTSU in Animal Science, and served in the US Army. He spent 25 years as a lone officer, two farmers, and became self-employed as a farmer, certified real estate appraisal of farms. Farming was his love, and the Kitterell, the community that he proudly called home. Laughlin was one of the founders of the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department, and served as the board president upon its founding until his death in 2013. He was a member of the Rutherford County Equalization Board and the Rutherford County Soil Conservation Board, the Rutherford County Farm Bureau Board, American Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisals, Tennessee Society of Farm Managers and Rural Appraisals. He served as president of the Cattlemen's Association, of the Appraisal Board, a Gideon Lions Club, MTSU founder of the MTSU Block and Bridle Club. Laughlin was a 4-H volunteer and sponsor, and received numerous county and national recognition for that. He was a clerk of sessions at the Cripple Creek Presbyterian Church there in Reedaville, and served in the Middle Tennessee Presbyterian. He was married to the love of his life, Barry Ann Moore of Reedaville in 1962, where they were married for 50 years. They have four daughters, Cynthia Gill in Gaithersburg, Maryland, Cheryl Jaeger in Nolansville, and Carla Bush of Reedaville, and myself. I can say, he taught us, we have teachers, county employees, and county servants, as I currently serve on the Planning Commission Board here in Rutherford County. He taught us to serve our community as he did. Thank you for your consideration.
I just want to say, I didn't know I was gonna have to get up here and speak, so thanks for the warning. My dad was David Leon Adams. He was born on January 1st, 1945, in Marshall County, to Henry Virgil Adams and Mildred K. Greggs Roden. He moved to Rutherford County as a young boy, and went on to become one of Kitterell's Fab Five. Y'all are probably too young to know who those are, but playing alongside Jimmy Monk Montgomery and other notable players. They were coached by the great Deward Futzcompton and Bob Burden. After graduating Kitterell High School in 1963, he enlisted into the Navy Reserve and attended MTSU. He married his wife Brenda in March of 1967, just before he was drafted into Vietnam. Just a few months later, David was onboard the USS Forrestal when the infamous fire broke out in July 1967. After serving active duty, he purchased and ran a little market on Woodbury Highway, naming it Adams Market. It was across from what used to be the Little Brown Jug. And then went on to open a second, 96 Market, which was located, or still is there, at the corner of Compton Road and Highway 96. Years later, after selling both stores, David worked nearby. He craft for a few years, then was hired on at Avco, which was later called Textron. I think now it's Triumph Revolt. He worked there for many years, until he retired. David and Brenda had raised their daughter Shannon on their small farm off Cripple Creek Loop in Reedaville. He passed away on March 20th, 2015, leaving behind his wife, daughter, and five grandchildren. He had one child and five grandchildren. I gave him all of those. Logan, Maddie, Gracie, Ally, and Ethan, who were the absolute center of his universe. David loved the Kitterell community. He and some of his fellow residents, represented by them, often got together to discuss ways to better their community, realizing the dire need for a local fire department. And they went on to found the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department, helped it grow over the years. My dad also served and assisted the board for the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department until he passed. He was a staple at the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department ham breakfasts, religiously attending every event and fundraiser over the years. Unfortunately, he passed away the morning before the March 2015 breakfast, where many in the community actually learned of his passing, so they placed flowers at the table, where he would have been collecting tickets that day in his honor. He was definitely one of the most recognized faces of the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department. He was also a co-founder of the Kitterell Community Board, and helped found the Kitterell Scholarship Board for Kitterell students. Mr. Adams was a supportive advocate for many of his friends who ran for local offices. Mr. Carr, I don't know how many shirts and hats my daddy had in his closet, Joe Carr. He absolutely loved election days. Without fail, you could find him camped out at Kitterell on Election Day, wearing his matching campaign shirt and hat while holding a sign representing his nominee from daylight to dark, rain or shine. His love of local politics motivated him to run for offices himself, where he served on several boards and committees, some right up until he died. Most notably, he served several years on the County Conservation Board, as well as the Rutherford County Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Equalization Board, and the Steering Committee. You'd be hard-pressed to find a longtime Kitterell or Reedaville resident that didn't know of David Adams. He was a well-loved man, and greatly missed by the community and all that knew him.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions they would like to ask of the four that the building is going to be renamed afterward? If not, I'll read this resolution. Whereas the county recently constructed a public health and safety building in Kitterell, and whereas a request has been made to name the building the P.E.A.Y. Public Safety Building after the following individuals, Mr. Bob P., Mr. Clyde Elrod, Mr. David Adams, and Mr. Yuri. And where else such request is being made in recognition of the demonstrating and positive impact the name individuals has had in Rutherford County and in the community of Kitterell, including their efforts in establishing the Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department. And as further described in the attached Exhibit 1 and elsewhere else, in recognition of such accomplishments and contributions, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to name the Public Health and Safety Building located in Kitterell as the P.E.A.Y. Public Health and Safety Building. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Public Health and Safety Building located in Kitterell shall be named the P.E.A.Y. Public Health and Safety Building. Resolve this 16th day of May 2024, and I so move.
Motion and a second. Now discussion.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, let me say, I have nothing at all against these families. They're all good families. I've known a lot of them. But as I have said a while ago, in talking about this, I look today, and some of you that have been around a while, you recognize this. This is this book I carried around with me for years, when we were trying to, I'd come before you and beg for these buildings. And then I'd be asked where I was gonna get the money. I was asked, "How in the world are we gonna build this? What are we gonna do?" We redesigned, we reorganized, and for the years that I carried this, these were always known as those community buildings. And as I've looked through these today, that's all they were ever called. They were either called for that name of that community and where they were. They were that for a purpose, as I guess what you could say tonight. When we announced for the Go Shelter Inn, you'd go to that community, and it was called the Rock Vale, Kitterell, Laskasis. It'll soon be the Walter Hill, the Plainview. When we have Amble, it'll go to Amble. And that's what people will look for. When we applied for the grant for this, through the COVID money, this is what we've talked about. This is what they were. And that's why I'm saying this, and once we start naming all these buildings, I think they lose somewhat of the community purpose of what they're for. And I think, all of a sudden, we're gonna start looking at a situation where we name a lot of buildings, and they not be what we want them to be. These belong to the community. These belong to everybody, and there's a lot of good people out there in Kitterell. We're right now are using the old fire station out there and the training station. That Kitterell Volunteer Fire Department built an outstanding training station. Outstanding, and that's where we're training our new firefighters. We're not going to the young station anymore here in the city. One reason, it's saving us a ton of money. Plus, we are rebuilding that station to make it something outstanding for us to keep training firefighters. Maybe you might want to look at naming that for some of the Kitterell volunteers that's out there. But I'm gonna have to say that I would have to vote against this, because I'm still trying to hold on to what we started with this. Y'all remember how often I'd hold my hand up, and this is Rutherford County, and I would place all these communities in a circle around Rutherford County, and we use it as a spider web to protect the citizens of Rutherford County and their communities. And that's what I'm talking about. These buildings are known as those communities, and they belong to those citizens in those communities. And that's what I'm saying. I would love to see it remain as it is.
I keep hearing somebody stand up over there and say, "I fought for these buildings." Well, he's not the only one that fought for these buildings. Every one of us did. And me in particular, if you'll go back and look at our budget hearings and our meetings, I fought dearly to do this. And I didn't start when COVID came along. I started back in 1998. When I became a Commissioner, one of my goals was to get ambulance service at Kitterell and Laskasis. And I fought hard to get that done. And that did get done, and I'm very proud of that fact. And I blame everybody in here that voted to approve these. Now, as far as taking the name away from Kitterell, that'll never happen. You know, the request here is to name this after residents, longtime residents and public servants from the Kitterell community that everybody in that area knows. I mean, you're gonna be hard-pressed to go out and find somebody that don't know these four people, if not all of them, at least one or two of them. You know, we asked for the name for these gentlemen, and it's the Public Health and Safety Building. Public Health and Sa-
Public Health and Safety Building. That is part of what the name is. So I would ask you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify, having read the resolution, the name Kitchell would be removed and replaced with P period E A Y? And is that correct?
The name that was requested was Bob P., Clyde Elrod, David Adams, Laughlin, Yuri, Public Health and Safety Building. That is what it is. The P period E period A period Y period is an acronym.
And the Kitchell would be removed? Would be peeled off?
Yes, it would be. It would be. But it would still be the Public Health and Safety Building.
Mr. Chairman, this is very compelling, and Mr. P. and the P. and Yuri. and Adams families did a great job. So as a member of property management, we're going to, we've considered a policy for naming buildings. So I just want to let us know if we do this, then, and Nick may have to get involved, we need to memorialize the criteria deceased, public servants, volunteer firefighters. We need to be prepared to rip, excuse me, we need to be prepared to remove Rock Vale from its facility, remove Walter Hill from its facility, et cetera. So I'm just talking about the consequences of this, not support for or against Mr. P.'s resolution. I hate, I have to burden our chairman of property management, do we need to consider any of those policies as we vote, or just vote and deal with that in another meeting? Mr. McAdoo?
Thank you, Commissioner. We had a lengthy discussion in the committee meeting, and the committee voted to bring it up here, the resolution like it is. Now, I did some research, because I believe in that. And I believe in not just coming up here shooting from the hip. October 21st, 192021, we renamed One Stop to the Bart Smith Building. And the way we did it in the property management committee, the motion was made by Trey Gooch. It was seconded by David Gannon to rename that building. And it was brought up by members of that committee, especially Commissioner Buchanan, why don't we just give it a plaque? No, that wasn't good enough. Commissioner Cook brought up, why don't we name it the Smith Family Building? That wasn't good enough. So we voted to bring it to the full commission. We brought it to the full commission. It passed. Only one that voted against it was Commissioner Cook. And we sent it over to Murfreesboro, because it's in the city limits of Murfreesboro, and it passed. And it was sent back to the full commission, and it passed. So therefore, policy, procedure, if we had one, I don't know anything about it, it wasn't brought up then. And I hadn't heard any policy and procedure being presented in the steering committee. So therefore, when this was presented to property management, all members were present. We had a good discussion, and that's what came out of property management. So all I did was follow suit on what we did in 2021. And that was, we renamed that building, voted to do it, and we brought it to the full commission. And this is simply what we're doing tonight.
Other questions or discussions?
Comment?
Chair, sir.
I personally know all four of these gentlemen and have heard of them all my life. I would not have to take one thing away from them or their families or what was read about But I really don't think we need to do this and leave the rest of the people at Kitchell where their families would probably come and read a biography about them and tell about their livelihood and things they had done and they had accomplished by singling them out. I could not, I have two of these being built in my district. The Last Cassis one is open now and functioning. The one at Walter Hill will probably open in four to six weeks. We'd have to put every letter in the alphabet on them if I tried to pick out who I would want to name that building after. I have that many outstanding people in both communities. So if it comes to me trying to make that decision, I would treat it, either one of my buildings, just like I treated the issue of the Walter Hill Dam. I hadn't been up here but a year or so on the commission. A gentleman down at Walter Hill come to me, he said, "What about naming the Walter Hill Dam after my daddy?" It ain't got a name on it. I said, "Why not?" So I brought it to committee. Hey, word got out in Walter Hill that we were going to name it after this individual's father. I had 15 to 25 people call, "I want you to name it after my daddy. I want you to name it after my uncle. They done this, they done that." Hey, and it got to be a very heated discussion down there. I simplified that project the night we were going to name that bridge. I said, "Let's drop the names, the name we were going to put on it and call it the Walter Hill Bridge." And that's what's on it today. And it worked. Never heard another word about it. My only other, not to take nothing away from Mr. P., but if I was going to use the acronyms of those gentlemen's names, I'd put them in alphabetical order and be done with it. Thank you.
Other questions, other comments? Have a motion and a second. You ready to vote? Are you on the board?
Since I can't be on the board, I'll vote yes.
Anyone that did not vote, no, wait a minute, I'm waiting on somebody.
George, you came alive.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
13 yes, 7 no.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting date is Thursday. Our next meeting date is Thursday, May 23rd, 2024, at 5:30 PM. And that concludes the business of property management committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. Item M. Public Works and Planning Committee, Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do not have a public works report tonight. Our next meeting will be June 4th at 5:30.
M. 6. Steering Legislative Government Committee, Chairman Craig Harris.
Commissioners, what we're voting on today is what we voted on three months ago, simply changing the private act. We have to have a two-thirds vote. I'll read the resolution again. Whereas at its December 14, 2023 meeting, the Rutherford County Commission adopted a resolution requesting that the General Assembly amend the Rutherford County Purchasing Act of 2017. Private Acts of 2017, Chapter 17, as amended by Private Acts of 2018, Chapter 63, and any other amendments that may apply, purchasing act in the following manner. One, to increase the competitive bid or proposals are required in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for non-emergency, non-prolatory purchases. And number two, that the required threshold for obtaining three written quotes, which is currently $10,000, 40% of the current bid, increased to $20,000, 40% of the increased bid, threshold of $50,000. Whereas the General Assembly recently enacted Private Chapter Number 47, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein, as if copied herein at length, verbatim, which amends the county's purchasing act in a manner described above. Whereas in order for said amendments to the purchasing act as described in Private Chapter Number 47 to become effective, the same must be approved by a two-thirds vote of the legislative body of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Private Chapter Number 47, a copy of which is attached, shall be and hereby is adopted, ratified, and approved. Be it further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a certified copy of this action to the Secretary of State. Resolve the 16th of May 2024 by two-thirds vote of the county legislative body of Rutherford County of Tennessee. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
President, motion and a second. Questions or discussion? Are you on the board?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my next, my next meeting is June 3rd.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Item mail is an executive session. This is attorney and client privileged meeting. For this, we'll ask everyone to exit the courtroom.
This time I'll call the Rutherford County Commission back into session. We'll go on to our last item on our agenda, which is Item M., other business. How about shout-outs?
Commissioner James.
If you'll bear with me, I have two shout-outs tonight. One, we have a ROTC instructor, Colonel Rector, who is retiring. He has served for many decades, both in the Army, then many decades with Rutherford County as both one of the high school instructors and then the district instructor. And he has stepped down at the end of the school year to retire, and I wanted to give him respect for his position and the many, many years of service both to our country and our county. And my other shout-out is to all the graduating high school seniors that are graduating this week. I'm particularly partial because one of them is my daughter. To Megan James, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a shout-out. I have one. Hey, I just want to say, I want to thank Van Horn Cookies for allowing us the desserts for tonight. I apologize, I didn't bring everyone dinner like I normally do, but it's been a busy week. But they are now located, they are the new owners of the Soda Shop, which is located at the fountains. So go and show them support if you can. This is another small, local business that donated the cookies for us tonight. So I just want to say we appreciate Van Horn Cookies for donate, the donations. And Trey did not partake during the meeting this time, so.
Not only thank them, but thank you for bringing them tonight. Thank you. Commissioner P.
Well, two shout-outs, but they're to the same individual, and that happens to be Commissioner Romel McMurray. I want to thank him for bringing to our attention all these wonderful food venues. And then on a personal note, I want to thank him for keeping me from getting a parking ticket this week.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, thank you. I want to shout out graduation coach Erica Shanklin at Laverne High School. All 463 of their seniors met graduation requirements, and I walk on the stage tonight.
Tonight is eventful. The presentation, the Memorial Day presentation was eventful, quite moving. Thank you, Commissioner Gooch, for arranging all that and putting it on tonight. Anyone have any other business? I would like to thank you once again for your attendance and your participation. You're moving the county in the right direction. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.